Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of February 16th order. Members of the zoning board of appeals are myself, Joseph Burke, chairperson, Ned Schmedek, Frank Donato, Wendy Tarver, along with Patty DeCarr from Urban and Economic Development, Amy Cozen, Chief Building Inspector, and Kate Hartnett, Assistant Corporation Counsel, Brian Thomas, Commissioner of Urban and Economic Development. We will hear each case individually as it appears on the agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address for the record. And after listening to your proposal, we will ask for if anyone is for the project or against. And all remarks and questions are to be addressed to the board only. Okay, and she'll be limited to, well, we can go more than two minutes per person. We will then vote on the project immediately following. Okay, first case, ZBA case number 5-2141 Brookline Drive. Applicant Richard Simpson, owner Richard Simpson. Pursuant to section 2-2967 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Utica, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct a garage at the above referenced property. Okay, is Mr. Simpson with us?
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay, if you'd like to tell the board your case, please.
Okay, I want to put up a 24 by 24 garage. And I need a little extra room to put it where I need to put it, okay? The reason why, do you want the reason why, or you just want to know what I would speak?
Well, we'd be, we'd want to hear the reason why as well.
Well, the reason why, and I would not, never be doing this if my cellar didn't flood every time we had a boy creek overflows. I had four inches the first time, I think it was 2011 or 12. Eleven inches in 2017, last time it had 24 inches, and every time I lose everything in my basement. So I need a place, more than anything, I need a place for storage. And that's why I'm proposing to put, I'd like to put up this garage, basically for storage.
Okay, how did you determine the size that you needed?
I figured I probably couldn't afford to go any bigger, and they probably wouldn't let me go any bigger. My basement right now is full of stuff. My basement is, this garage would be about half the size of the area of my basement. If you saw my basement, it is full. And I just got to get stuff out of here and get it somewhere else.
All right. Do you have any idea what the structure is going to look like?
Yeah.
Things on that, or?
Well, I talked to a builder, it's going to be a garage. Probably going to have an 18-foot door. It's going to be white vinyl siding to match the house.
Okay.
That's basically it, just the garage.
How far away from the deck are you, would the garage be?
I'm, I'd like to put my garage approximately eight foot from the deck. And the reason being is because of the floods, I have built up the land. So the lawyer, where my back end is right now, that land is floored, okay?
Okay.
Floored down to try to keep water as far away from the house as I can, even though at times it doesn't work.
There was a pretty bad flood last time, did you know?
It was a real bad flood the last time, but I have flooded every single time. The last time was the, actually, the last time was the first time I'd actually come across all the land. Before, it only hit the sidewalks going around the house. This one just came, you know, just came.
Right across, yeah. Okay. Board, any questions?
The height, you're going to go normal garage height? Do you know what the height would be, right?
I don't really know, but I don't want it, I don't want it to look crazy, because I don't want it to be bigger than the house, you know what I mean? It'll all fit.
So you're going to, similar roof line?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It'll be the same roof line.
Will you get rid of the shed that's back here now, or?
Shed's gotta go.
Okay.
The shed will go.
And that looks like pretty close to property line, don't it?
What does?
The current shed.
Shed, I think it's like three foot, three foot off the property line.
Board, just to let you know, the accessory structure, the garage cannot be any taller. It has to be shorter than the main structure. Oh, even if it's one foot, it has to be shorter than the main structure.
The structure, okay.
Oh, absolutely.
Can you hear it, Mr. Simpson?
Absolutely gonna be. I'm not going to make it higher than the house, it's going to look stupid.
Okay, wanted to make sure you were aware.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, I understand that.
Any other questions?
I'm all set.
Okay, anyone for the project?
Hello, Mr. Burke, Celeste Friend, Councilwoman for South Utica. I just wanted to speak in favor of this project. I know Mr. Simpson, he was one of the first constituents I got to know because of the terrible flooding that happened back in 2019. And I just want to say, I totally approve of this project. I know Mr. Simpson to be a responsible, conscientious homeowner. The flooding there is terrible. It's perfectly reasonable for everyone in that neighborhood to anticipate more flooding. We hope not, and we're doing what we can, but it's perfectly reasonable for people to plan on more flooding. So I'm just here to say that I support this project. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you. How about against? Anyone against the project?
Mr. Simpson, I just have one more quick question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You're not going to build this up, this is going to be ground level, correct?
Ground level.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you weren't going to raise it any, because that would change, okay?
Oh, no, 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 I don't want to go up. No, no, I want to be able to go from my driveway into the garage.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure you weren't going to rise it up any, all right.
Oh, no, 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 because that wouldn't, it won't look good.
Okay, perfect.
Any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Simpson, you're all set.
Make sure, make sure you get a building permit through our codes department?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, I want to thank everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, good luck.
All right, thank you very much, bye-bye.
Okay, next case, ZBA case number 6-21437 Jeanette Drive. Applicant Kenetanko, owner Kenetanko. Pursuant to section 2-29176 of the zoning ordinance, the applicant is seeking a home occupation permit in order to operate a home office at the above referenced property. Hey, is Mr. Henkel on?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, and you need this home, you need this home office for what purpose?
I am going to be a, be a gun broker. Uh, this is when you're, actually, what I'll be doing is going to different homes and transferring firearms from one person to another, depending the sale. And I need this home office and paperwork and such.
Okay, so, how does that work?
There'll be no guns thrown out of my house. Uh, so if you, for instance, if you wanted to sell some of your firearms, instead you go to a gun dealer, transfer the paperwork, I will come to your house and transfer the paperwork for you.
Oh, okay. All right, you need a special license for that, or permit, or how's that work?
Yeah, I will, I'm applying for my special firearm license.
Your license? Okay.
I didn't hear you.
You said you're, you are licensed to do that, right?
I'm applying, I'm applying for my special firearm license.
Oh, you are, okay.
I'm just waiting for the home office to get going. Once I get that going, I can put an address down. Step one is the home office. Step two is, send a few people in for the special firearm.
Okay.
Mr. Henkel, will you have any people, any applicants coming to your home?
I don't foresee that, no. Uh, because I don't really want to do business business out of my home. Occasionally, I might get somebody who got questions that'll come by, but I do not anticipate people in my home.
Okay.
That's why I've got to sign up for nothing on the house.
Okay. Board, any questions?
Will you be storing any firearms in the house?
Only my own, my own personal firearms I already have here, will not be, there'll be no other firearms in the house, no.
Is Kate on?
I'm here.
Okay. To be honest with you, this was very unusual for me. And I mean, I think one of the first for many years I've been on this board to come across. So I, and it's, and it's, I, I think it's a very delicate situation to make a judgment on. So I just want to try to maybe get your take on legalities of this.
Um, as long as he's, if he achieves the type of license that he needs to perform this work, um, and he's not storing any guns on the property, I don't see any basis for denial.
Basically, you're just giving him permission to use the room as an office for an office?
So basically, we're giving him permission to use the room as a house for an office. Uh, and I, my other thing is, you know, if he does decide to, all of a sudden, people stop coming to the house as a business type, you know, I mean, we almost have no control after the fact.
So, so Patty, can I just ask Patty first?
I don't, I, I don't think the actual sale, he's not going to participate in the sale of a firearm. You're not going to sell any firearms, correct?
No, sir.
You're just going to handle the paperwork, the actual transaction from a buyer and a seller?
Yeah.
Okay. So there won't be any retail sales of firearms out of your house?
No, not at all.
Yeah, I, this is not a gun shop, this isn't a gun shop in a residential neighborhood or anything like that. This is, this is not going to have any impact on the neighborhood, I would say, so.
Hey, from the definition of a, of a home occupation, this would actually qualify as a minor home occupation. However, since gun brokerage office is not listed in our zoning ordinance, it would have to come before the zoning board for interpretation and permission to do this. So, of the other items, it does, it would qualify as a minor home occupation rather than a major.
Because there's not, like, people showing up. Um, I, I think it would be, I, I don't really, the zoning, the zoning ordinance is meant to regulate the usage of land and to moderate the intensity of the use of land. And I, I think that, you know, the zoning board, especially since he's not going to be holding guns there and there's none of the risks associated with storing guns, like there would be at a firearms dealer's. Um, you know, there's not a lot, not really any risk to having this in the neighborhood. Um, I think it's not, it's not a very complicated situation because there's not actually going to be any guns stored at the premises related to the, to the business.
That, that answers my question, I appreciate it. I mean, it, I think simplifies it for me. Thank you.
Okay, anyone for the project? Any against?
Joe, I did, I did receive a phone call today from Maria Beck, who is an elderly neighbor. She doesn't have the means to get on this, uh, virtual meeting. And she was, she was opposed to this. She lives at 443 Jeanette Drive.
Okay.
Patty, did she give any reason or anything, or just said she was opposed?
Um, she, she was not in favor of guns at all.
Okay.
Okay.
We, we're just on the premises.
No, I understand that. I think she was just, she was not in favor of gun usage.
All right.
Just, just so everyone knows, is that we are subject to a certain, um, I don't know really how this would relate to the Second Amendment, but the Supreme Court did say that the Second Amendment right applies to the states. And I, I'm not sure that we could deny something just because it related to guns, especially if there's no guns actually on the premises, just so everyone knows.
Okay, any motions? Or a motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Mr. Henkel, you're all set, good luck.
You have to get your home occupa-, you'll have to get your home occupation permit through the codes department.
Yep, I know he, I know what to do, I'll send him a check out tomorrow.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much, have a great night.
Thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next case, ZBA case number 7-2128 to 30 Scott Street. Applicant Cymbria Badenhausen. Owner Cymbria Badenhausen. Pursuant to section 2-2968 of the zoning ordinance, the applicant is seeking a special use permit in order to operate a not-for-profit agency at the above referenced property. Okay. Who's on with us?
Cymbria, do you want to? Yes, what, what can I tell you?
Just explain what you're proposing, uh, explain to the board what will be going on at this location.
Sure, uh, so Mohawk Valley Latino Association is looking for a new home. They're currently at DeSau, and they're having trouble with people finding their office and getting access because of COVID. So, uh, we started looking for a property for them, um, last January, a year ago. And, uh, then I started looking for my own property. And it turns out the property that I found is actually perfect for MVLA. There's a, an apartment on the first floor, which is two-code. And, uh, so MVLA would like to move into that apartment. In order to do that, we needed the variance. We'll be putting in a community garden, which will be open to the public and will be used by the members of MVLA and the residents of Corn Hill. And, uh, we're going to be doing some training in permaculture there.
Okay, is the garden going where I see all the years' worth of leaves?
Yeah, it's actually just one year.
One year, okay.
Yeah, and yes, that's where it's going, and, uh, there's a full lot, uh, 116 by 40. It's empty, uh, there had been a fire there in 2008. There was remediation, everything was removed, and it's now an empty lot.
Okay.
It's fenced in, it has an extra driveway, so we want to put a gate in to accommodate any extra cars that we need to have arriving at the site, so there's two full driveways.
Okay, let's see.
Would you mind putting the divine portion up?
Sure.
There we go.
Okay.
Exactly, so permaculture, permaculture design is permanent agriculture. And what I'll be doing is I'll be training residents of Corn Hill and the surrounding areas on how to design edible landscapes. Uh, we're going to teach some workforce development, leadership skills. Um, and we're going to create a habitat for the members of MVLA there.
Okay.
And do you have the hours of operation for MVLA? Um, the cars you're expecting, any of that information?
Sonia, do you want to answer that question?
Again, what was the, uh?
We're just looking for, um, what type of operations will be going on at, uh, MVLA offices or centers? Um, what your hours of operation will be, how many people do you expect at one time?
Um, well, the office is open from May 30 to February. Mondays to Fridays. And, um, clients can, because of COVID, of course, I don't see clients every day. Um, I make my schedule to see maybe, right now, two people per day. But sometimes we can have, you know, up to five to seven people, not all at once.
Awesome. It takes, during this COVID pandemic, you're figuring people, just two people a day going through it?
Yes, because, as you know, not everyone's vaccinated. We do have a lot of protocols.
Sure.
Um, you know, we will have to follow still, still, you know, taking temperature, socially distancing everybody. So, um, I try to be very careful.
Okay.
So Sonia, after, after the whole COVID situation, hopefully that will be soon, um, what are your plans for this space? Do you plan on having celebrations? Is it going to be, um, community space? Or is it just going to be solely MVLA's offices?
No, we plan on doing celebrations, small gatherings, of course. Uh, but yes, we plan on doing cultural celebration. Nothing like the Latino festival, nothing like that. But celebrations at the garden, at the community garden, yes.
We're really hoping that this is going to, um, help the existing food desert, um, that people will be able to come and pick their own vegetables, everything will be free. Uh, and we want to invite in the entire Corn Hill community. We're also going to be working closely with MUC, who will be providing us, because they have large spaces, they're going to be providing us with some indoor training during COVID if there is inclement weather. And, uh, they're, they're really excited about the project. And they've got a larger Asian population that we want to get to know. And so, uh, we're really looking forward to partnering.
This is the garden, this is what your garden's going to be?
Well, this is what it, it's, it's a possible design with permaculture. The people who are participating, who are going to live there, are the ones who design it, according to what they want. So this is a, this is a possible design. Uh, we won't know the real design until the course is over.
And everything's going to be edible?
Yes, that's the idea, yep, absolutely.
Fruits, vegetables, flowers.
Flowers, yeah.
Yes, we plan it now.
Okay.
And because, as you know, our city is very diverse, we are not excluding anyone to come and enjoy the fruits and labor of this project.
And where's the, I don't see the hot pepper section in there.
There will be, I eat hot peppers.
Okay, all right.
You'll have to come and plant some.
Yes.
Burke, you have, yes, Mr. Burke, you have to go and plant some.
Any questions, board?
Uh, Joe, I got a couple of questions. Uh, still trying to understand the full concept of this whole thing, uh, as far as the house itself. And then, uh, obviously, the lot next door where he proposed this garden, which honestly, I think it's a great idea, I mean, it looks beautiful, I mean, any type of garden, you know. Uh, but, uh, my, my question is, is, they say it's, uh, educational, and then, and then they say it's living. Are they going to have classrooms in the house itself for educational purposes? You know, I don't know how many students. You know, and how many students and so forth? And then, uh, my second question is, you know, uh, will they be living there or, or, or will anybody be living in the house itself?
So I own the property and I live on the second floor. And, uh, so no one else other than me will be living on the property. We're hoping that eventually, um, MVLA can buy the building and they can manage it and they would be coming to you for any variances they would need if that were to happen. But that's at least five years down the, the road, um, unless somebody comes and gives her a, a hundred thousand dollars tomorrow. Um, and, uh, the, the classrooms will not be indoors. That's why we're partnering, one reason we're partnering with MUC. Uh, they have huge, because it's an old church, they have huge rooms where we could socially distance and each student can have their own table and mask up and they'd be able to learn. We're also going to be teaching through Zoom, which I'm, I, I do that all the time. So until we're able to, um, to be indoors together safely, we will not be at, uh, the property. And this is just the first floor and eventually maybe the basement because the basement entrance to, is in her apartment, in the first floor apartment. So, um, it's got, you know, a great kitchen and it's a, it's an apartment and it's in great shape. And so they could literally move in tomorrow if they wanted to.
So my question is, and, uh, what will they actually do, uh, on the first floor and then potentially in the basement? Because obviously we're, we're all hoping for this COVID thing, uh, you know, sooner than later, but, and, and I might, I might, I'm just trying to grasp what's going after this whole thing, what the entire vision is. And then even if they do decide to buy the building at some point, uh, just so, you know, I understand what the whole concept is and what kind of typo, I mean, uh, uh, volume of people are we expecting here and what's the turnaround? Uh, you know, as you say, I, community, but I'm just, I'm trying to understand is it classrooms, is it, you know, where, where would these people be coming from? You know, it's like a college course or, I mean, I wonder, I mean, is working with a research center or something?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. Those are really good questions. Um, so the School for Ecosystem Advocacy is the training course we're setting up. If everyone would mute themselves, there is really bad, um, background noise. Um, so, uh, there, we're looking for up to twenty students. It's not going to be a large class because we want to be able to social distance wherever we are. They will not be meeting onsite until the summer when we could eventually social distance outdoors. They would be meeting indoors at MUC in a socially distanced manner. Uh, the basement would be the donations room. There would be nobody going down there except staff essentially at first until COVID's better. Um, and, uh, they, the, uh, inner, the bedroom would be the main office for Sonia. And then the front room would be, uh, her assistant's welcome area. And everything would have COVID protections exactly like they have now at DeSau's. Um, and as Sonia said, she's seeing no, usually around two people a day entering the place. So my driveway more than accommodates that kind of traffic. And the classroom is essentially outside. So in permaculture, you're actually out there observing and interacting and looking at the wildlife, looking at the sunlight, looking at the water. They'll learn how to manage stormwater, which I know Celeste is excited about. Um, and it's really, that's the classroom is outdoors.
But then the other thing I, uh, at least, uh, it's, uh, obviously we have winters here. So what, what do you do in the, in the winter time? Obviously, if you can't have the, the classrooms outside and, and it's growing, if there's only a certain window that you can do all these things?
Well, I'm, I'm an expert at Zoom. I've been using it for more than two years before COVID came along. So I do many trainings over Zoom all the time.
Can I chime in now? Um, uh, here. Can you all hear me?
Who's on?
Yes.
I, 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 I just wanted to chime in and, um, I, I serve on the common council representing Cornhill Fifth Ward and I am, uh, excited about this project and wanted to, in my support, um, for it formally. Um, I think part of the communication issue is that, uh, while they do a lot of programming and intend to do, uh, uh, um, a lot of programming, the space is primarily similar to the, uh, variance that you just approved. The space is primarily an office space, um, by which they can have, uh, people come in to, to do all of the work that they do with navigating being Americans or refugees in the area and, 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 um, Latin Americans in Utica. And then, uh, to the cherry on top, if we, beyond just the office, is that they want to do educational programs. They want to, uh, have space. They want to have the freedom to do that in the garden. I think I'm getting a question or Thomas this. Live. But they want to have, want to have this community gap. They want to have, um, a space that can do all agriculture. So those are not, who needs to, a lot of chat?
Councilman, you're coming in.
Brian, can you mute this?
I'm sorry?
I think the.
Yeah, I'm the host.
Whoever the host is. Okay. All right. Um, I, I was just saying that I think that the additional, uh, um, the garden and all the educational programs by which they want to do are not the primary focus. I, I, I don't believe the, the primary focus is that this space will become an office for the Mohawk Valley Latino Association and in, in the, uh, I guess the great spirit of this administration and Utica, which is, is committed to, uh, community development. This is their example and best foot forward in terms of how they can take, uh, just a lot in Cornhill on Scott Street, provide this beautiful community garden there. And so, um, I think it goes well beyond just a variance. They're actually committing of their own dollars, um, and, and resources to, 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 uh, redevelop this space. And so, um, it is not going to be a quasi school. The primary focus is for this to be an office space, um, and then have that community garden in the back. And I fully support that.
Thank you, councilman. And you're correct. I know your comments.
Hello, council. Dan Cozer, the building inspector. You do realize we're seeking a change of housing practice building and a building permit would be required with a set of plans to tell me how this conversion is going to take place. And a certificate of occupancy would be required. You're well aware of that?
There's no building being done. There's no change to the building. This is an empty lot and we're just planting, planting plants.
You're, you're changing the use of the space from residential to commercial. A building permit is required. There may be certain changes that you have to make according to the New York State Code. You can't just say that apartment is now an office. There, there is certain requirements that are going to have to be met.
Thank you.
Okay. That's going to have to be done on your part by a registered engineer or architect telling me how and what changes need to be made. Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of that. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay. And I, call me tomorrow. I will assist you in any manner I can.
Who am I speaking with?
This is Dan Cozer, the chief building inspector.
Thank you. And is that C O Z E R?
C O Z Z A.
Z Z A. Thank you.
Mr. Burke, this is Celeste Friend again. I just want to say this is, um, not in my ward, but Sonia Martinez is a constituent and I know Cimbrilla Badenhausen. Uh, this is an excellent plan, an excellent project. I believe that it will benefit, um, the Latinx community. I believe it will benefit Cornhill. I believe it will benefit all of Utica. So I just quickly wanted to chime in and say that I am in support of this project. Thank
Joe, do you want to ask for speakers, please? Joe, you're muted. Joe, you muted your, uh, your computer.
Brian must have muted.
No. I'm, Brian's not here. It's me running the meeting, but I, I can't take him off.
So it's on, it's on the bottom of your screen, sir?
Yeah, th- this is not, I, I mean, the questions I had were answered. Uh, I was just trying to understand. Honestly, I think this is a great, great plan and a great idea as well, uh, supporting the community. I'm just trying to understand that, you know, if it'll have any impact on, uh, the, the neighborhood itself, you know, the, the amount of traffic and, and so forth. So, um, I think, think if everybody's answered those questions, but, uh, uh, as we can here, Joe, uh, can I ask for, for, or against here or?
Got it.
I have a quick question. How many employees are there on a daily basis?
Say that again, please.
I, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the answer.
No, say that again.
How many employees are there on a daily basis?
There's only two.
And there's onsite parking for both of those, correct? In the driveway?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can fit many more than two cars.
Okay. And around the, where the gardens are going, is it currently fenced?
It is.
Okay. And there'd be no alterations to that fencing?
Um, we would want to put a gate in on the second driveway, on the driveway for thirty Scott, so that we could accommodate more cars if we needed to and not, uh, you know, harm the residents in the area. And I've spoken to both of the residents in, on either side and they both are heartily for this project. I don't know if they've responded to any letters, but they both were very excited about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I think we might have some other people who want to speak in support of the project.
Okay. Anyone else for the project? Go ahead. State your name for the record. How about anyone against the project?
Bonjo, I do have a letter, uh, that I have to read in support of it.
Okay.
To whom it, to whom it may concern, the Villalatino Association's long history and established reputation far precede any of my involvement in this community. My professional experience with its leadership, Sonia Martinez, have been nothing but positive and constructive. I am confident in Ms. Martinez's insight and vision, knowing what's best for her community and organizational process. As the director of the Midtown Utica Community Center, I look forward to working with MVLA more consistently. As caretaker of our property, we, the MUC, work with many community-minded organizations and try our best to offer space and any other resources we might have for our collective progress as a community. I fully support the special use permit at twenty-eight Scott Street, so it may become the future home of the Mohawk Villalatino Association. Sonia, I apologize. I have no idea. La Abandancia? I apologize. Community Center.
It's, it's La Abandancia. It means abundance.
As a resident of Scott Street, I am pleased that another private resident has taken ownership of a property with plans on developing her extra lot into a food forest. Absentee landlords are a problem in our neighborhood and it's great having increased owner occupancy, especially with landscaping skills. Chris Sunderland, resident fifty-two Scott Street, Director, Midtown Utica Community Center. Okay, now you can ask for, again, you can ask for.
Frank, I think that's your phone that's repeating. Your microphone.
Are we ready for vote, board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any motion?
Any motion?
A motion for proof.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Who's second? Who's seconded?
I did not.
Thank you, Ned.
I did not.
Thank you, Ned. You're all set. Your motion has been approved. Um, like Mr. Cozer said, you will have to get in contact with him for, uh, permits and so forth.
Thank you very much for all of your help, everyone. Great questions.
Thank you very much.
Good, good luck.
Joe, do you want to adjourn the meeting, please?
It's okay. The meetings are adjourned. Thank you, board.
Good night, everyone. Have a great night.
Next month.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.